Big call to order to this meeting of the Plain Township Board of Trustees for Tuesday, March 25th, 2014. If everyone will stand for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before us, we have the agenda. Do we have any additions, deletions, or corrections by fellow board members?
Can I add the line with our program?
Yes.
Our program number five, off well cut, 2014.
And then, let's see here. Brother, Concerns of Trustees, just Tax and Sentiment Review Council. Any other changes? Okay, the agenda will stand as amended. The Sheriff's Report, we have nothing. Is there anybody in the crowd that wishes to address the Sheriff's Office with any questions or concerns? Okay, that'll close out the Sheriff's Report. We're gonna take it to the Detectives' Report. I'm gonna turn that over to Detective Cottick.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. The report for February 2014 is as follows. We had 718 calls for service, which was about the same as what we had through January. Our crash reports were down slightly with 83, 13 crash with injury reports. Alarms were down slightly from January, down to 88. We had 168 traffic stops and 122 citations. I think those were pretty large increases, 80 percent increase in traffic stops. We had a little nicer weather, made a huge difference. And 39 arrests with 21 bookings and 18 services, so it was about the same.
Anybody have any questions on the Detectives' Report? Thank you Detective. What's that? It's gonna be next unfinished business. I'm gonna turn that over to our Administrator, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. Under unfinished business, I have the liquor license which was held for kebab and curry.
That was sent up to the Sheriff's Office for a?
Yeah, they just send those out and we had no?
Well, that's the weather we asked to come out.
Yeah, and there were no issues with that.
Move on that?
Just to send it back with no?
Yeah. Closes out unfinished business. New business, Mrs. Campbell.
Thank you. Number one, under new business, I'm gonna turn over to Chief Snyder.
This evening here, we had Mr. Chaney from the Hall of Fame Marathon Races here. He's gonna pull over some information with the Board. I've been in a few meetings regarding the race and the setup of it and I can tell you this is a really good group of guys working with and I tell you these guys got it together as far as the planning of the race, the layout of the race. I'm excited to see this go on and the Board's to support this, but you know, he's here this evening to discuss and ask any question, answer any questions the Board may have.
Mr. Chaney, if you will, just state your name and your address for the fiscal officer for the record.
My name is Jim Chaney, C-H-A-N-E-Y. Our office address is 201 Market Avenue North in downtown Canton. I have about seven copies. I didn't quite bring enough, so I'll leave them over here and those folks that would like a copy, if you'd like me to create more, I'm certainly willing to do that. My name is Jim Chaney. I'm the Executive Race Director for the Pro Football Hall of Fame Marathon. Obviously, there have been prior marathoning events in our area. My background is I was the Associate Race Director with the Half Marathon. I was actually involved with the Half Marathon about two years before its initial running. I was the Race Director for a Half Marathon called the Buckeye Half. The folks that organized the Half came to me. I was part of the team that planned it and was a, I guess, a super volunteer for the first seven years and then their paid staff was full-time employed for my last two years there. I left about a year, year and change ago and wasn't quite sure if I was gonna stay in the running business, but I was approached by three gentlemen that I had some business dealings with and they said, hey, how would you like to put on a race in Canton? I had participated in the Canton Marathon and I thought it was a very fine event. It was done very well. Certainly, I think where things behind the scenes unravelled a bit after the fact. So, we sat down, we put together a five-year business plan and presented it to the Pro Football Hall of Fame. Part of it was certainly to have a marathon, but we really wanted to bring a nationally-recognized event to our area. So, we have a plan that calls for a marathon, which is 26 miles, and a half marathon, which is 13 miles, in year one. And then, beginning next year, we'll be introducing a race that is the day before our event, which will be a 10K championship series. We have not announced that to the public yet. We'll be doing that race week.
You just did.
I know. But the details were, we're getting close, so we're about to do that, so it's okay. But I have spoken about it to a variety of groups. At the moment, we've got runners coming in from 39 states and five different countries. We really partnered with the Hall to create a destination type of event. So, we've gotten good publicity around the country. I can tell you that some of the efforts in the past with marathoning has hindered us a little bit, not a lot, but a little bit. Certainly, this winter has given us a tough challenge with people training, so we're finding a lot of people that had signed up for the marathon don't want to drop down because they haven't quite gotten the miles in. But we've been meeting with all the safety forces, EMS, fire, police. Our course goes through four municipalities. The first, the Half Marathon is primarily in the city of Canton and then after 12 and a half miles, the runners split. The Half Marathoners finish inside of Fawcett Stadium and the marathoners head southwest to west. So, we go through Perry, through Canton Township, and obviously through Plain Township. We're working with Altman. They really are a medical lead team. I am the very first to tell you that I am by no means an expert on roads. I am not an expert on safety. I am not an expert on medical services, so it's been very important to us that very early on, we engaged these groups and had given them, you know, ownership of those pieces. We've got a very friendly course, runner-friendly course. It was designed by myself and two other runners that are nationally-ranked. We wanted to make sure it was attractive and competitive. We are a spring event. Marathons are run in the spring and the fall. My background is with the Half Marathon. I did not want to compete with the Half Marathon. I actually love those folks and love that event, but I didn't mind taking a little bite out of Cleveland. We are three weeks before the Cleveland Marathon, very intentionally. We really want people to run our Half Marathon in preparation for the Cleveland Marathon. You don't get a lot of chances to run a marathon twice because you really exhaust yourself. So, by having a three-week buffer, especially in the spring, those folks can run our marathon and if their day is good and the weather's good, they go for it. Otherwise, they back off and they can run the Cleveland Marathon to go for time. Some of the things that you've got in your package here and a couple of things I'd like to point out, it was very important to us that this marathon was financially backed. In the perfect world, what happens is you get runner registrations and you have expenses. And if you do your job the right way, registrations are higher than your expenses. But when you start an event, you have to have some seed money for many, many reasons. You've gotta supply in advance of when people will sign up. And in our case, you know, it was very important that we were able to put deposits down or ensure payment to various municipalities and services, you know, should they require a deposit. So, that was one of the keys with the Pro Football Hall of Fame and saying, yes, this is a good plan. We're really partnering with the Hall. They consider this one of their events. We are not a, although we are a separate company, they're not treating us like, hey, we're just renting the Hall's name and we are renting, you know, a little space on their terrain. They've really embraced what we are doing and part of our 10K series is we'll be going out to all 32 NFL cities, putting on a 10K race, also taking the Hall of Fame with us with a portable display. So, when we're in Denver, it will be the Pro Football Hall of Fame Legends 10K Denver Edition. So, we'll be going to 32 cities and the concept is that the top man and the top woman from each of these cities will win an all-expenses-paid trip to Canton to run the championship event, which will be the day before the Marathon and Half Marathon starting next year. So, when I was a kid, I used to love Pump Pass and Kick and it's really Pump Pass and Kick for money is what it is. I wanted to be the best nine-year-old boy representing the Cleveland Browns at the Super Bowl. So, we're sort of taking that approach and I mentioned that in the final two pages that you have there. Mentioned that we wanted to create a nationally-recognized event. The NFL is the number-two brand behind Disney. Disney does an amazing job in bringing people to their parks and they actually have a run series where they bring folks in in February, January, February, to run a marathon and a half marathon and it's a total experience. So, not only are they visiting Disney, but they're also getting in a run. Same thing holds true with our race. We've got a gentleman coming in from England who is a die-hard 49ers fan and he's a marathoner and this was sort of the tipping point for him to say, hey, I can come to the States, I can run a marathon, I can visit football. And so, we're hearing a lot of those kinds of things. We've been meeting for the last year. We were very quiet initially about putting our plans together. We did not want to announce this to the public until everyone gave us the green light. That was critical for us. We certainly didn't want to make any assumptions that, hey, we're doing this marathon whether you like it or not. We're very deliberate in getting community backing and municipalities to buy in. Our event is gonna be a little bit different than most marathons. We're really looking at all the practices and the things that happen in the marathoning world and questioning them. Very simple things. If you are active or reserve military, you run for free. I mean, literally, it costs us a shirt and a medal and that's a very small price that we can pay for these folks that serve our country, so we'll serve them for a day. We are, we're doing some things, for example, your race bib. When you run a race, you get a bib with a number on it, but the truth is, the only people that really need that number are photographers and the scoring, the timing people. Well, now, there's all kinds of electronic timing devices and timing chips that go behind that. So, we're using a name instead of a number on our bib. So, it's a much more personalized, elite type of experience. You see that a lot in the Olympics. It has their name out of a big number. We're doing, when you finish the Marathon and the Half Marathon, you usually get wrapped in a Mylar or what they call a heat sheet, a Mylar blanket, which is great. It keeps you warm when you finish, but eight out of 10 of those get thrown away. So, we're gonna do a fleece finisher blanket, so not only is it keeping you warm, but it's a keeps you safe. There are a few races in the country that do that, but we seem to be getting the most recognition about that. Our race course, I've got three maps in the packet here. The first one is sort of an illustrated map that shows where all the miles are. It's not to scale. The second map comes from the city of Canton's Indian Department. They've given us a schematic. And then, the final one drills down to Plain Township. Really, the extent of our presence is the last mile, 1.2 miles. We come up Warts, we turn right onto 16th, we head north on Broad, we turn right on the 25th and we do a little wiggle to get back to Fawcett Stadium. We've had great cooperation with the Sheriff's Department and City of Canton Police and they're all coordinating who is responsible for what sections of course and where does the handoff happen. Our command center will be at Fire Station Number Four on Cleveland, the 25th. We will have a presence, obviously, at Fawcett Stadium. Our race expo, which is the day before, is going to be inside of the Hall of Fame, so all of our participants that are coming in will literally go through the Hall of Fame where it will be football, 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 running information, football, 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 running information. So, that's very unique to, at least to our industry, the running industry. We're 33 days away. We've got a cap of 7,000 runners. We will not exceed 7,000. To be very honest with you, we are not going to hit 7,000. We'll probably end up right around 4,000 to 4,500 is I think we're working on our hands. The good news is we passed our break-even. You know, again, we're trying to look at this as a business. We've passed the break-even point, which is great, so if we have to close registration today, we're happy as an organization, but we're expecting a pretty good bump, other than today with snow. You know, as people, we've talked to a lot of people that have said, oh, yeah, I'm running. Have you signed up yet? No. Well, you need to sign up in order to run, so. So, we've got, you know, just a pinch over a month to go and things are right on track and we're just very pleased and appreciate the support that you've gotten from all the folks that we've dealt with. Are there any specific questions I can answer for you?
I'm just looking, it looks like our little section, it looks like is that mile marker between 25 and the end of the course?
Correct.
That's our little section?
Yeah.
Awesome. Yeah, that's an exciting spot. That's the end. Good spot to be watching.
Yeah, so of all of our participants, it's about 75 percent are in the Half Marathon and 25 percent are in the Full Marathon.
Awesome. That's nice. Very nice. So, you're doing four, actually, on side of the register? I think there were four. Oh, boy, yeah. Way to go. That'd be a last-minute decision. For the half. I got the top modern three, because I can't lay it all out. I'll root for both of you. As a whole, I mean, I know just from conversations I've heard from different parties and so forth, the planning and logistics of this is much significantly smoother and definitely sounds because of the planning and keeping it buttoned up from the get-go and then timing it. So, we look forward to, you know, be part of it as well and hopefully see it grow in the coming years.
If I may just, Mr. Haas, that Campert did ask us to, we're gonna supply a gator and a couple of paramedics that day around the event, the starting point and the finishing area on the Hall of Fame. And then, we're also gonna be staffing two additional firefighter, paramedics at our Station Three, that they run in the roadhead area there from around, you know, 1,400, 1,500 block are brought up through Township into the Hall of Fame entrances there, where we finish our race. So, I know Joe Ischino is gonna be supplying some barricades and some other things too, so from a cost perspective, if, you know, we can get that stuff prepared for the next meeting, you know, I can give it to Mr. Chaney and get those numbers and the Board wants that all prep before the race, like we've done in the past, we can do that as far as the payment on that.
Do you have any questions or additional questions?
No, I mean, we've, I think we've laid a good, put a good framework in place and we, a week from today, we have our second, what we call our All Hands on Deck meeting. Again, just to confirm, you know, plans that we've put in place and give each group an opportunity to understand what these runners are doing. You know, our basic philosophy, and I sort of preach this to my daughter, is there are two paths you can walk down. You can, you can sort of talk about things and do things and all of a sudden you cram, you know, whether it's your schoolwork or whatever and do the events or just like homework. You do all the prep in advance. By the time that comes around, it really should be a non-event. And that's really sort of the approach that we're taking and, you know, it gives us a little bit of relaxation and honestly, you know, lets us focus on the things that, God forbid, may happen. And so, you know, so I think we're in very good shape and again, I really appreciate the opportunity.
Fantastic. Thank you.
Thanks.
Thank you for coming.
Okay, and then, keeping in the Hall of Fame theme, number two, under new business, is a letter to the Board of Trustees in regards to the Balloon Classic, which is held July 18th through 20th at the Kent State University and Stark State College campus, which is similar to last year. They do the early Friday morning flights and the flight that night and Saturday morning and evening flights and a morning flight on Sunday. And what they're asking is to utilize both Diamond Park and Alpine Park as a possible target for landings. We've done this in the past. I don't know that we've ever had a landing.
Never heard of it.
Haven't? Maybe it's not been brought?
They were brought to our attention, but the landing's never seen or landed.
Maybe this is the first official ask, but they're asking for permission to land there. What we have scheduled, there's, at the Diamond Community Room is indoor and Alpine South Shelters are reserved those days.
I'm taking a kick.
Yeah, they'd get a kick out of it if balloons actually didn't land there.
My only comment would be if for any forsaken reason, the turf or the property ended up damaged because of a rough landing or something, we'd be notified of it, so.
Yeah, I mean, but one thing, you'd have to be sure that if that balloon weren't land, let's say on Diamond Field, are they taking vehicles out there to pick that stuff up? If it's wet out there, are they out tracking on? We just gotta be cautious with that.
Well, we can give permission for Alpine only. I guess I do share that concern about Diamond with our soccer fields.
I would say.
Because they have to take the vehicle off.
They do take the vehicles out and look.
And they have to go load that up now and fill it with wet.
Snyder making more sense.
It's too hilly because they like the flat landing, so we could always say just Alpine only, which is kind of a, you know, a scapegoat. It is a small spot.
I mean, I don't know, is that possible? Do they have to drive out to there to pick that up?
Yeah. I think they do, but I think two things to consider is as long as we have a contact and some of the damage and two, keep in mind, we do allow parking on those fields certainly since for larger tournaments.
That's the ball field, not the actual soccer field.
No, actually, it's on the grass beyond the ball field, so.
Just be careful, that is wet.
Correct. And that's my concern as well.
And take a heavy truck out there.
Would you like me to make contact with the Enshamet Festival?
Well, it says, what it includes is a car with about three people parking on the street near the target area will control the target area and they'll place a nylon target or X, so a nylon X on the property to be visible from the air and they'll be aware of any instructions.
It should be a designated area in the park that they can land.
Yeah.
I've been on one of those. They can steer one of those.
Yeah, they do. We do have a contact person.
I'll follow.
Rob, do you wanna follow up on that?
I can handle it.
Will you pass this down to Rob? The next one is a little easier. Mr. Ischino gave this to me to present and this is for the Balloon Classic Food Fest and Fireworks to request the road department to provide 70 cones to use at the Kent State University and Stark campus and to confirm the cones will be picked up on Monday, July 14th and returned on the 21st. I mean, I don't need a resolution, I'll just, yeah, maybe that's the one that's been done in the past.
Yeah, we've done that. I know Chief B's down there, he used to be sitting out there.
And that's the end of new business.
Thank you, Ms. Campbell. That's gonna take us to our fiscal officer's report. Mr. Flax?
Thank you, Mr. President. First item on my agenda is a request for a resolution by the Board to authorize the payment of the pending warrants in an amount of $81,933.06.
Also moved, second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Two is a request for a resolution by the Board to authorize the payment of the regular payroll in an amount not to exceed $220,000.
So, moved, seconded, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Three is a request for a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees, Stark County Hall of Fame, to authorize the payment of the following medical expenses provided by Alt pure and express scripts.
Also, second.
Who's on?
Mr. Givitt. In motion. I said, discussion. Is this fully get, I mean, how much of this is the old express scripts versus what's the new portion that's Alt pure? Because I knew there was communications we'd had with the employees there. I just wanna make sure we're truly getting off of that.
I send every employee, I think I received an email with three more names and I email every employee. However, there have been some instances where it has not been the employees' fault. They have given their Alt pure card and they've charged Alt pure for them, but express scripts for the child, it's been an issue with the pharmacist that we're working through, but we're down to about two, three names now. But starting next month, they'll just be flat-out declined. But every employee that I get a report on, I send an email, I call, I make contact. So, we went from a very large list to a very small list rather.
Okay. Roll call.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Fiscal Officer Number Four is the investment report.
Interest rates are still looking really good here in April.
Yeah, it is looking, probably after the first or second week, maybe actually they have some rates to tell you about, but they could still leave a change there for that 23rd.
And Fiscal Officer Number Five is a request for a resolution by the Board to authorize the additional benefits of longevity pay to members of the Utility Workers Union of America, AFL-CIO Local 561, who meet the requirements as attached to the schedule effective April 1st, 2014. Also moved, second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Geovasis?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas?
Yes.
That concludes the fiscal officer's report for tonight.
Thank you, Mr. Flax. It's gonna take us back to our Administrator, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. I do want to talk, number one, about our prescription direct wrap-up that will be held here at the Township Hall on Saturday, April 26th from 10:00 a.m. to 2:00 p.m. We will have members of our Stark County Sheriff's Department deputies who will be taking any unused prescription drugs. There are no questions asked about them. Names, labels can be left on them. The goal is to get those used or unused prescriptions out of your cabinets instead of just tossed or, and families where their children, kids having access to those and then getting those disposed of correctly. It's always a very huge success here at the Township, keeping those off the streets. I know also it helps prevent accidental poisonings. I have to say, we do truly appreciate the Sheriff's Office doing this at Plain Township. We have residents who stop in just once in a while with prescriptions because they're just used to this being a site and I just call our detective and he takes those for us, but to have a day like this is really a huge advantage to our Township residents. It's also in our newsletter, so remember Saturday, April 26th from 10 to 2. And the next item on my agenda is a resolution by the Plain Township Board of Trustees to authorize the purchase of a new Ryder 5000 Athletic Field Marking Machine from Whitlam Paint Company, Nat Dixie, $10,550.75 and to authorize payment from Fund 01B06.
Also moved, Administrator Number Two, discussion. This is gonna be to update our older piece of equipment that, correct me if I'm wrong, I thought Joe and Derek said before that actually is a hot fire. We had some issues on that.
Yeah, well, yes, we did. And also, the paint machine that we use now to paint the fields, that we have to dilute the paint. So, every week, we have to paint the fields and it's diluted and we lose paint and it costs more money. So, this machine allows us to put paint directly onto those fields and what will happen, and we've seen it in action, is we should for just regular soccer events, not tournaments, where we want it looking, you know, brand-new. looking, you know, brand new. We should have to paint those fields just every two to three weeks now. So it's going to save on paint and our other paint machine who we're directly losing paint from. And we're gonna, we won't waste paint. It won't be diluted. And it will save on manpower then, that we won't be doing that every week. So, you do have multiple quotes there, but I put it in with the lowest quote. And this is something that last year I met with Derek about looking at what his needs would be. So that's why you'll see that in the equipment for buildings, grounds and maintenance and parks, because this is something that I have budgeted for.
Any further discussion? Roll call. Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
And that's the end of the Administrator report.
Okay, that's going to take us to Fire. Chief Snyder?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chairman. Item number one is the monthly report.
Chief, just as a question.
Yes, sir.
When I take a look at the number of calls and then say just average response times, like if you look back in December, we had a higher total responses, but your average response time was lower. But then jump up to February, it's less calls but a longer response. Is that pretty much attributed to the weather?
Weather related, probably some of it's weather related, time of day, you know.
Okay, we're talking 30 seconds, but I'm just curious.
Yeah, but still, I didn't monitor it yet. I know that, actually, I pulled last year's records and we're pretty close. The latter was last year, February this time, but, so I actually was looking back and I actually talked to our Shook Commanders about response times again, make sure we're doing what we need to be doing, but you haven't keep an eye on that?
Okay. Okay, Chief, on that.
Item number two is to authorize a purchase and payment for two light pack monitors and two Lucas chest compression systems for visi-metronics.
Also move on Fire, number two, seconded, discussion. And Chief, why? Because this is pretty unique. Explain what this machine can do.
Well, first of all, the two heart monitors are replacing two heart monitors that we currently have that are over 10 years old. And they're an older model that we've been currently using for the last five or six years. So this will bring six of our eight monitors up to the same monitor, has the same features and so forth. So the other two monitors that are also getting older too, that we'll eventually be phasing those out. Currently, we have eight monitors. We're going to be phasing two of those away in the next few years and then we'll only have six in service. The second item is the Lucas machine, which does automatic chest compressions for, obviously for circulation or CPR. The machine itself, it's not something that's new out there. They've had it out there for a few years. They were actually air operated, was an airborne years ago. Just two customers, they finally come out in hospital years with a model that's battery operated, obviously giving the perception of good circulation, good depth compression, steady compressions. The back of the animal's moving down a road trying to do CPR can be challenging in itself when you're moving, making turns. So you're not really getting the depth perception, the depth of the chest compression that you really need to get good circulation. This machine will automatically do all that, continue to do that through getting into the hospital, in the ED, and they have to go to, you know, if they do get a rhythm, you know, they'll keep it on that patient during that time in emergency department also. So we're going to be currently just buying two of them right now. I'm going to put one on the west side of the township, one on the east side of the township, see all those are working out. And then maybe later on, if we get pretty good results, which I anticipate us doing, that I anticipate buying two more later on, maybe this year.
Also, any further discussion? Roll call. Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Thank you. And item number three is to authorize a purchase and payment for rope rescue equipment from Phoenix Safety Outfitters. Again, this equipment's going to be replacing and plus some additional equipment throughout. Some of our harnesses that we have are pre-aged as far as longevity wise. The rope needs to be replaced. So this rope's almost 10 years old. It's wearing and obviously it's unsafe for anybody to be hanging off of during a true rescue. So this will be some additional equipment, plus also some replacement.
Second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Thank you. I just may want to add too, that a couple of weeks ago, we did host two different weeks, the trot class. That's, you know, the whole county, well, it's four or five departments in the county that are putting this trot team together, Canton, Michonne, Jackson, us. So we were involved and we did some training at actually our new station with the prop we have there to do some inside compliance based training and using some of these rescue techniques and equipment that they were also making additional purchases of. That's all. Thank you.
Chief, that'll take us to Public Service Department. Mr. Isino's actually excused this evening. The director of record replied that he's on vacation, so, Mrs. Campbell.
Before you, you have the monthly report. I just want to point out that you'll see there's been a lot of patching and pothole repair, mailbox replacement, and also the total amount for permits is around $730, so that's good. And then looking ahead, I know that Mr. Isino and Mr. Moriarty have been spending some time evaluating the roads for the paving programs. So hopefully we won't need anymore or too much more salting and plowing, and they can start sweeping the streets to prepare for spring.
Do you have some cover up, Schreiber?
Yeah.
That's one of those roads this year is on the paving.
It is on the paving list.
That's going to...
Yeah.
Coming out of Beverly and Kings Creek, Mr. Snyder, it's 42.
Yeah, it is on the paving list for this year. And then you also have the Parks and Facilities report. And what's on the front page is the roller that the Road Department built, the Parks, Parks and Facility. They painted that. That roller is going to be fantastic for our fields over at Diamond. But they've had a number of work orders, working on some quotes. They've also done an awful lot of plowing. So that's their report.
Is there anybody else that's outstanding within parks that we need to take a look at going into next year for the CDL based upon the cross-training we discussed in the whole public service plan that I proposed and we collected?
I would like to see, or if you do any, is that what...
If there's anybody else that's outstanding, I think we need to...
Absolutely.
Take a look at that, just because I know this year, granted weather was a big driver of it.
Yes.
Even though the guys are good about getting out, a lot of weary and...
Yeah. I know it helped with Derek Atchison having his CDL. There is another gentleman that I would like to see have that done.
Let's make sure we get that together with Joe.
We'll talk about that, too.
Okay.
Yes, and then I have a resolution. Item number three is to, for the Board of Trustees to contract with Tusco LLC for the 2014 crack sealing program not to exceed the amount of $15,400 from Fund 03C03.
Also move, second, discussion, roll call.
Mr. Leo?
Yes.
Mr. Gevasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas?
Yes.
Okay, that concludes Public Service Department. That's going to take us to the Zoning Department. Mr. Ball?
Gentlemen, zoning number one, before you receive is the monthly report from the month of February.
The distances aren't too far around.
Hey, just hang on to your hats. They're coming. I had a phone call yesterday wanting to know who would call when the grass got too high, so. Because they were sure when you get too high, because they didn't take the, shrug the driveway correctly. So, yeah, they're on the way. That's it for tonight, but I'll be catching up real fast.
Okay. Thank you, Danny. It's going to take us to Parks Programming. Mr. Steinberg?
Gentlemen, item number one is the monthly report for Parks Program. We did want to point out that with the new law field reservations, based on the previous high for gross revenue, we've already eclipsed that with the secured fields so far.
Plus we still, now we've got better control of what the excess capacity is to continue scheduling and filling in.
Yeah, we think we're in good shape to move out. Good work. Item number two, gentlemen, just an announcement that we have secured an 11U baseball tournament on April 11th and April 12th. It's a new tournament. It's the first year we've had it. Two Holly Hills baseball coaches will be running the tournament and utilizing Diamond for it up to the finals, and then they'll be playing the finals on their own fields. Item number three, we have set a date for the dedication of the new Schneider Park Permanent Restroom Facilities for Saturday, May 3rd at 10:00 a.m. Invitations are going out within the next seven days to the donors, and they've all been contacted. And the remaining plaques and such have been ordered. Item number four, a pair of resignation from our concessionaires, Ms. Caitlin Babin and Mr. Jack Bondren. They are moving on to the next steps of their lives. They are graduating and coincidentally getting married and just moving on to their careers. So we want to thank them for their support, and we have their letters of resignation here for your acceptance tonight.
Acceptance with the grants. I know both of them have been pretty good workers, because I've been down there volunteering in the past, and I mean, they're...
They're wonderful kids, and we wish them the best. Absolutely great workers. And item number five, as of 4/17 this afternoon, we have been notified that we have retained the Bothwell Cup Age Group Soccer Tournament for the fall again.
All right, nice work on putting that together. I know there was some additional stuff we...
There was some negotiating, but it worked out well, and the packets of the bid are here before you.
And that'll be all for Parks Program. Then you, it's going to take us to Communications. I'm going to turn that back over to our Administrator, Ms. Campbell.
Thank you. The first letter we received was from Vicki Speaker and her family to the Fire Department. And she writes, "Dear Rescue Workers, your fast response and all the time you spent working on my husband on 2/24/14 is so deeply appreciated. My husband, Scott, didn't make it home that day. He is so loved and missed, and it's a true blessing that our Township has you," Vicki Speaker and family. So that is very nice. And if you could pass along to the crew that was there that day to write a letter even after her husband passed, they must have really given some good care and handled that situation just very, very well, Chief, so. Secondly, the Road Department received a letter also, which was very nice. I think during plowing, snow had knocked over a sign, and this lady's sending a thank you for getting the sign up so quickly. And she says, "Dear Jill, the new signage is wonderful. You have allowed me some peace of mind, and I feel I will be able to regain the comfort and security that I once had in our home. I greatly appreciate how fast you took care of this matter. You'll never know how much this means to me. Thanks again, Jane Turner." So, two very nice letters. And that's the end of Communications.
Okay. It's going to move us to the portion of our meeting, public speaks. If there's anybody that wishes to address the Board of Trustees regarding any specific matter related to Township business, come to the podium, state your name and your address for the record. And there is a three-minute limit per individual. Can we have anybody that wishes to address the Board?
My name's Neil McAdonald. Please go up last name, please.
M C E L D O W N E Y. One of the owners of EB Pub and Party Center. My address is 446 Tompkins Avenue in Akron, Ohio. And our, here's our card. I've got one for everybody. We're back again. The other night, a good cop called again to our place, and we just wanted to come and once again represent ourselves. We're just trying to have a nice establishment and provide the area with a place to go for great food and entertainment. We've had so much positive feedback in the time we've been open, and Mr. Brenman has been our only echo. It is obvious that the noise level is not the issue. Otherwise, the other neighbors would be complaining as well. And they are closer in proximity. He is using the vagueness of the noise ordinance to keep us from running our business. The party center and that other golf course has been business many years before Mr. Brenman had to move there. There has been no, without any noise ordinance issue whatsoever. His complaints about music coming from a bank of all on a Saturday night could be compared to someone buying a home near an airport and calling the police every time a plane takes off. We have sent all of our entertainment messages to keep the volume down at a low, comfortable volume, and our managers monitor the volume and ask for it to be turned down if needed. We have also monitored the music from the fence line near Mr. Brenman's house home. It is barely audible. The traffic from the road is actually louder. There has to be some kind of line drawn when a neighbor is being unreasonable. I feel he, we feel he's wasting officer's time and taxpayers' money at this point. The police have been called twice to our establishment and have investigated the complaints, and on both occasions do not feel the music is loud enough to cause annoyance to anyone. Recently, we have booked a Hoover High School Union wedding reception and birthday parties. This Sunday, we are hosting a Blues in Schools event where young musicians perform with instructors and other musicians. We also have a prayer service every Sunday before we open at 10:30 with Reverend Jeffrey Witherspoon. This area needs a venue like ours to have such events. One person should not be able to prevent that one. No one else believes a problem that shared that with the people. That, the Sunday after that occurrence, I had three of the neighbors, we got time?
Yeah, go ahead.
We had three neighbors come to the place for breakfast that morning on the Sunday after that occurrence. And we was talking about the situation, and they said they didn't even know we had anything going on that night. And they were, they lived closer to what Mr. Brenman lives. So, I mean, that's all I have to say about it.
Okay. Am I understanding you correctly? You've not been taken?
No.
Okay. And have the police officers, they've made a verbal representation to you that they feel the noise level is appropriate?
Yes.
Okay. What I can say on behalf of the Board as the Law Director is, we've encouraged citizens to call when they think there's a problem. If, we're not going to discourage them to call. And I understand, you know, manpower and all that kind of stuff is probably not the highest priority use of our, of our police officers we'd like to see, but it is there for the citizens. So if they feel there's an issue, they certainly are well within their rights to call, just as you're well within your rights to explain the situation to the police officers. And it sounds like that's gone just fine for you to this point. So, understanding what you're saying, I can't, we can't, this Board is not going to dissuade a citizen from calling, certainly. We wished that maybe there was some more camaraderie over there. But, you know, I hear our Board members say quite regularly, you can't legislate people to be good neighbors, and we just, we can't. So, understanding that you haven't been taken, it seems that from the police force side of things, there hasn't been much of an issue. Is that fair to say?
Fair to say.
Okay. So, I just wanted to get that out before the Board speaks.
Eric, just so you know for the record, you guys sent out invitations to people to come and see what's happened. Saturday night, my wife and I, we decided we were going to come there and have dinner, just so we can see what was going on. And I was there when the officer arrived. And my wife was surprised, because my wife isn't the person that likes overly loud things, and she was a little bit surprised. But I did want to call before I left. I did walk through the parking lot, Tombside, to bear weight to see how far you can hear things. And it's very, barely audible. And, like, I'm not going to intercede and tell the deputies to do or not to do. I mean, that's our judgment call. And I did talk to the deputy that he began, did, saying that it's barely audible, but he says he didn't feel that, as well, you know, you need to do what you... As well, you know, you need to do what you got to do.
Yeah, we trust our guys to make those calls, that's what they're there for.
But I think with all the joint property owners there and we're getting angry, I know we're encouraging it. We also have to be cognizant of the fact that we don't want to make sure that it's getting to a point where it might become harassing on the part of the resident too.
Sure.
Because he might not like the nature of the establishment.
I agree.
You know, because I even had contact, had somebody contact the neighbor directly next door to the, you know, complaining resident.
Okay.
Didn't hear any noise Saturday night. And he's actually a house closer than where the phone call originated. And normally, in the past, I've been very vocal and outspoken to these issues when it comes to the noise ordinance. And, you know, like comparatively, we had it in another golf course. And I just wanted to hear for myself, see what was going on there. And I tell you what, good food, nice establishment, I mean not, you know, an advertisement for a place, but it's. But we did, we did go and I witnessed it for myself. So I wanted, because I'm getting the phone calls, I got two phone calls Saturday night and I got another phone call Sunday. I just personally, my opinion, I was good with any.
I was there Saturday night as well. Actually, we both talked to the police officer at the same time. And I, I told the band three times to keep turning down. I mean, they didn't turn back up, but, you know, when I, when I first got there, I thought my number two outside, I asked them to turn it down. And the police officer showed up, so I talked to him, just me, and I went up and asked him to turn it down again. And he showed back up again and that's when we went out and talked to him. So a third time I told him to turn it down, just to, just to appease the neighbors best we could. But, I mean, even at that point, the officer said that that was not, that it wasn't that loud, that it wasn't abusive. But, you know, we're just here trying to defend ourselves, it's kind of a, as well as.
When you know, he said he had to turn it down, you know, the music was up too, or was it, did you go out in the backyard where the music was up? I didn't think even that there was a need to go outside, you know, before the music was turned down. But, you know, the, what I witnessed that night in the restaurant and while the band was playing, I think the average age in the old crowd was probably forty-five, fifty.
Yeah, we have a older crowd.
So that's, no, you have a young crowd. What are you talking about?
Mature.
Are you really young?
I'm in that age group.
Why, you're five of all. I'm very young.
Mature.
You're a young crowd.
Mature and distinguished.
Just for the record, I did make a phone call today of a resident who's right there also, just to find out, so we're not hearing, we're not hearing anything else from any other residents. This particular resident says they do not hear anything. So I just make that clear, they said they hear nothing. So they're right, right there.
Well, it sounds like we're pretty much on the same page and it sounds like our, our guys are on the same page.
And if it becomes an issue, I think it will be addressed.
Absolutely.
I think the establishment as it stands today is really trying to work with the surrounding property owners and, you know, getting the asset, getting the asset over there. Let me ask you a question, and I got to be careful how I say this, but when is it a point, because we, we try to be very particular about our deputies going out, can we leave them elsewhere? But yet, we are very strong that if a resident does call, our deputies have to go to that location. But what if it gets to be important, these calls just keep coming out and it's at the same time that it's not loud for the deputies? Neighbors aren't complaining, but once again, we have to use our deputies when they can be elsewhere, go onto the same location.
I think, and jump in here if you feel want, if you want to, but I, I think we need to monitor it, we need to watch it. We need to see how often it's happening, how long they're spending out there, you know, those kinds of things. It's, it's, you're right, we don't want to be taking guys off the street constantly to go check out the same complaint that's not generating any kind of a ticket or any kind of a violation. So we do have to weigh that.
We're open for suggestions. I mean, if there's something that we can do to make this better, I mean, we, I mean, we've done everything. But we've actually, I mean, Eric actually went over and talked to the guy himself. I'm not sure how that conversation went, but trying to, you know, ask them to plug him over to see, you know, check out the place, but he just doesn't want to come over. So, I mean, we're open for suggestions, whatever we can do to keep this.
Well, I think on your half, I think you're doing as much as you can right now to keep monitoring the situation. It looks like Eric said earlier, you can't legislate good neighbors. You know, and it's not that the person that's calling is a bad person, he's not, Mr. Brenman's not a bad person. Matter of fact, he's, you know, a pretty nice guy. You know, and I got, I got a phone message from him that said that he did receive the invitation and that he was going to ignore the call and he didn't want anything to do with it. He just doesn't want any noise or any bands playing. That's just the way he feels. And I got the message. I kept it, so we'll see what, how goes and how it happens going forward. But I know you guys will hopefully keep monitoring the situation.
Yeah, we have no intention of causing problems, I mean.
I said, trust me, I think all of our stances, you know, we want to be a good steward. The business is no different than our residents' mill, what limited base we have. So if we've got something in our community like this, your guys' establishment or anywhere else, you know, we can help protect, preserve and grow, which is what we want. So appreciate you taking the time out of your evening to come in.
Thank you.
Do we have anybody else that wishes to address the board of trustees this evening? Nothing, what's that? That'll close the public speech. That's going to take us to concerns of trustees. I did have tax and center review council. Danny and I both went down for the tax and center review council meeting on the thirteenth, it was, one twenty-five. We had two different hearings. One was on Thacker, used to be Thacker, a little bit, it's Metalco, it's the one that we had to sign a, heard a different copies because entities outside of us couldn't keep it. But they, they have met and fulfilled all of their responsibilities. And actually, while we was there, they noted, what was it, they're going to make about another million dollar investment
Oh, wow.
in the facility over there. So that even though this enterprise zone agreement has expired as of this year, I would envision that they'll be coming back with that type of investment for some continued type of abatement. The other one was Meander Hospitality Hotel. Again, they met, they met all expectations and in fact.
See their, they expired.
Yeah, their pay, their payroll was significantly greater to the tune of, what, almost four hundred thousand? Four, in excess of four hundred thousand greater than was expected. You take a look at the jobs, the full, the full time, and then what they classified as full-time equivalent. So essentially, you're taking all your part timers and saying, okay, if I've got thirty or forty, it's actually set seventeen or, you know, fifteen to twenty full, full time. So, you know, everybody got a clean bill, the health were good there. So I just wanted to make sure the record reflected that, because those are good businesses that are succeeding in the township and again, protecting and growing that opportunity. Is there anything else other concerns of trustees by my fellow board members?
Just for the record, I did receive a correspondence from an entity today that's interested in its marketing property at Mount Leddy and Go Ranch. The cement plant. And I did forward that information on to the city of Canton also because we're going to be, hopefully, in the next month, working very closely with the city of Canton's Economic Development Department. And they give Benny and Fonda Williams at the city, you know, together with this company promoting that property. So we can work together, so we're all on the same page.
Is there anything else? Mr. Lino?
Do you have anything?
Thank you.
Okay, concerns of fiscal officer, Mr. Pla. Okay, it's going to take us to the approval of the minutes. I'm going to move on our work session from March seventh, two thousand and fourteen. I'll second it. Discussion, roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
And Mr. Haas? Yes. Then I'm going to move on the regular minutes from March eleventh, two thousand and fourteen. Second discussion, roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas? Yes. There is a need for executive session, so be it hereby resolved by the county board of trustees, Stark County, Ohio, to adjourn the executive session. At seven oh two PM from this regular meeting is authorized under Ohio Revised Code one two one dot two two G for the purpose of the consideration of one A, appointment of a public employer official, one B, appointment of a public employer official, one C, dismissal of a public employer official, one F, compensation of a public employer official, three, conference with the law director or other routine counsel concerning pending or imminent court action, and six, specialized details of security arrangements where disclosure of matters discussed could be used for the purpose of committing or avoiding prosecution for a violation of the law. Second discussion, roll call. Mr. Lino?
Yes.
Mr. Javasis?
Yes.
Mr. Haas? Yes. Those numbers still have to be worked on, Robert, as chief said.
We got here, this week, you and Joe are route, we're going to get together when it's here. They're going to get together and they're going to figure out what the costs are again.